Seven PM. Let's call the commission meeting for July 11th to order. We have one, two, three, four, and we need an alternate of two. We have one alternate here, so Bruce, would you serve for who's missing it?
Derek.
Derek's not here.
Okay.
Let's look at the minutes. Anybody have any comments or corrections in the minutes of June 20th? I saw none, so without the minutes, if anybody doesn't object. So move on to whole business. Public hearing, Mark Loubetkin. We continue this to, they want it continued to July 25th.
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
So we can just do that, right? Application 1626 of TJ Donahue for the Simsbury Land Trust parking lot on East Wheaton This two needs to be continued to 7:25 because the historic district didn't like what they were proposing, refused to draw the certificate, so they have to deal with that. And so A2 will continue to.
Mr. Chairman, just on Mr. Donahue's application 16-26, you actually need to open that hearing this evening? Once that hearing has been opened, then continue it to your next regular hearing.
Okay, so this has not been opened. Okay. So.
And it has been noticed for.
It has been noticed for tonight. Okay, so Kevin, you want to read the, oh, Derek.
(laughing). It's annoying to me. Application 1626 of TJ Donahue, Agent Simsbury Land Trust owner for special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section E of the Simsbury zoning regulations, off-street parking regulation for Phase 1 of the parking area on the property located in Wheaton Street, assessors map, H11 Block 106, Lot 037A, zones R40 and RDD.
Good. Okay, now we need to continue this now that it's open to 7:25.
Do we see if anyone else?
Anybody in the public want to comment on this? Thank you. So we will keep that open and continue to 7:25.
Do we need to rush it down? Do we need to lock it down?
If we didn't close it, that would be it. The next application is 1628 of Frank Luca, again, it needs to be opened. Kevin, you want to?
Okay. Application 1628 of Frank J. Luca, Powderman, Spirits Company LLC, Agent 1 and 3 Milk Pond Partners LLC owner for special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section 8 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a liquor permit on the property located at 1 Milk Pond Lane, assessors map F11, Block 103, Lots 005 to 23, Zone I2.
Thank you. Does anyone care to speak to this application? We're going to continue that one to 7:25. I believe there's a notice that has to be posted for a proper amount of time and it can't be acted on until after 7:25. So if there's no comment on this, we will continue. We've got to open the public hearing for the special exception.
Mr. Chairman, regarding our opening, application number 1629 of Frank J. Grillo, Agent Vincent Yakobaska, owner for special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section 8 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a liquor permit on a property located at 1610 Lot Meadow Street, assessors map H02, Lot 402, Lot 07, Zone B1.
Thank you. And this one, anyone would like to speak to it? We have an application here that could be.
Yes, we do have an applicant here this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We'll.
Hi, Frank J. Grillo, 152 Turkeyville, East Granby. I'm looking to open the old corn crib, 1610, Hop House Street.
Right.
That's basically about it.
So you're going to reopen it as a package store?
Yes, sir. Yes.
I believe the prior owner had abandoned.
Yeah, it was a cross-up, wasn't it? Yeah, though.
I don't know exactly what happened over there, but someone was opening up a convenience store and a store and a liquor permit got pulled away.
Anyone else have any comments or?
So you need our approval before you go to the state? Or you need the state?
Yes, the state's just hovering right now, just waiting. Yes, the state's approval is fine. You're a lot of one packages for 2,500 people. As a matter of fact, there's three licenses in town that are available.
Yeah, I think it's a good, you know, it was always a cross-up rated for years. It's a great old spot. I drove by it about a month ago and I was thinking nobody had gone into a very old Italian place and I was wondering whatever happened to the corn crib.
Yeah, and I don't own a package store now in West, West Lefield. Same, same, same thing happened.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They closed it, I reopened it, made a real neat place out of it.
So you've already been through the approval process?
No, I'm waiting on.
No, for, in West Lefield?
Yes, yes, so it's going to go, yeah. Everybody's just hovering and waiting. We can't, can't do nothing without that.
Any other comments in the commissions?
Yeah, I just, I'm interested in just confirming, are you familiar with the conditions that have been suggested by the staff? Are you familiar with the conditions?
No, but I do know a special use permit. I do business in five different towns and I do have two locations that are special use, so there's a lot of things that I have to abide by and I understand that.
Well, how about this, there's to be no tastings or special events that shall occur in a liquor store?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Place is real small.
Parking spaces shall be restrikt in accordance with the approved site plan.
Yes, sir.
Handicap parking shall be restrikt and no sign installed in order to address potential ADA.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have a new ramp going in too.
And then you have to submit another application for any signage changes?
Yes, there's no signage change at all, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but we do have a new ramp going in that we're going to put in, there was never a ramp there, so I don't really.
Then you're familiar with it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I have a question, why not tasting? Is that normal for us?
I've never seen it before. I'm a little concerned about that.
It's generating that, no line, no tasting. I mean, typically you go to a lot of package stores and they offer that when they have a special vendor in.
The applicant indicated to staff in initial meetings that they were just looking for retail license, that they weren't having any, they said they would forego any special events. The only concern could be is the, their site is tight on parking with the multiple tenants. You have the restaurant out front, it's the Thai restaurant now that's reopened, it was the old Tom Lane Pizza, I think was the original name.
Sausage Pilos.
You have the retail tropical fish stores, unit behind that too. So if you add a lot of the intense uses altogether, you may, the parking may not be able to support all of the uses coming along. So staff, in discussion with Mr. Grillo, he said, I'm just going to really look for the retail sales. I'm not, I don't need the promotional events like other establishments have.
I thought it was just a change. Just about every place you go, it new.
Yeah, no, they do have, we don't have them at my location either. We don't have what they call the offense.
So you're comfortable with not having?
We do tasting, I mean, you know, but we don't, we don't make a, it's not an offense. You know how some package stores, they advertise it and they come, no. If a new product comes out, you know, and they promote the product, when the customer comes through, if they would like to try it, they do. But we do no events.
This language says you can't do that.
So I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I mean, tasting and special events, I think are two different things, right?
You could separate them.
You may want to separate.
Special events could be just a vendor coming through and doing something.
Yeah, see, we don't have, you know, a lot of times they hire a crew, girls or guys or whoever is serving it, they got tables set up.
As long as you're comfortable with your line business.
Well, you know, whatever I have to do to get the crib open, it's what I'm going to do.
Separate.
I think we should take out the tasting prohibition.
Because you may want to have somebody sample wine.
Yes.
We're trying to give you more.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
I mean, I don't know a place that you don't go into today where they don't have some wine.
And we are, there are parking spots that were supposed to be there, but were never there, that we're going to add there. So we'd have to find a bit of parking. There's three more parking spots that are going to be on the side of the building where the entrance ramp is to get out because we put a handicap entrance ramp, a ramp. But.
Any more comments?
Maybe it could be fine.
Yeah.
Can we go to, after the public hearing is closed? Jamie, you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, you are in receipt of a letter dated July 7th, 2016 from Mike Glidden, Assistant Town Planner, with, again, recommended motions in its form in the favorable manner. One of those, again, was the provision of prohibited tastings and events, and the intent there was, given the nature of the mixed use of the property in a limited number of spaces, that there was concern of not having an extended stay there, that it was, it was a quick turnover within the facility and not extended, or became a destination to go to to sample or try a product. You're there for a specific reason or purchase and then you vacate that space and there's quick turnover in order to accommodate the mixed abuses. If the commission potentially isn't concerned about that, I think it's appropriate to discuss that during the deliberation.
Right. Anybody in the public want to speak to this application?
Well, I live, I back up to the property and.
I need your name and address.
Okay, Elizabeth Jackham.
How do you spell that?
J.A.C.H.Y.M.
And your address?
11 Ice Pond Room, Granby.
Thank you.
I think it's great. It's, you know, it's nice to have a business there and, you know, tired of seeing it empty. And I think it'd be good, so.
Great.
More for it.
Okay, anyone else?
I just happen to be here, my name's Bob Dugay. I happen to be here for another matter. I was a small businessman. I just think the gentleman should warrant that he won't advertise a special event. Apparently there's going to be more parking than before. Why do we want to restrict people? You sort of raised that, Mr. Chairman. Why restrict him? As long as he doesn't advertise it and wherever he might advertise it to attract, I mean, how many people go to these things? You know, I use another liquor store, I shouldn't say that in front of the gentleman, but in Avon, I lived close to Avon and Simsbury guy owns it, but, you know, sometimes I have somebody there and two people walk by, it's not a big deal. I cannot imagine that it's going to be attracting crowds, so why restrict him? Just don't advertise it, please.
We do not advertise it. I just want to, I understand what they're saying, what they're stating. We do not pull crowds. It's not a crowd thing. You come in, you go to the door, you come through, we have a taste here, would you like to try this wine? They taste the wine, they go. We don't advertise, we don't, I don't want that. I wouldn't want that.
Remember, the special exception goes with property, so if you were to sell it in the future, you can look at what impact you're having on the value of property. Accepting restrictions that aren't reasonable is not a good idea. Anyway, any more comments from the public? Anybody in the commission?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Kevin made a motion, close the public hearing, application 1629.
Second.
And further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
So are you doing that?
Sorry.
Changing the order yourself?
That comes later. We can, we can change our agenda and act on that, or we can go through these things. Most of them have go ahead.
We're doing good.
We're doing good. Okay, let's look at the application 1631 of Brian Deno. Public hearing is set for today. We need to open that public hearing, but the applicant requests us to continue it between 5th, so.
We are going to open it. Okay, opening application 1631 of Brian Deno, Deno Land Surveying Agent Frank J. Sedato, Sedati Jr., owner for special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section 9 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for necessary dwelling above the proposed garage and the property located at 9 Non-Broke Road Drive, assessors map C19, Block 510, Lot 044, Zone R40.
Okay, does anyone here want to speak to this application? I think I do.
My name's Bob Dugay. I live at 119 The Pride. I look up, rear of my house, and I happen to see the garage in question. What the gentleman wants to do is take a 1,300 square, 1,350 square foot garage, four bays, rip it down and put a 1,000-foot ADU, accessory dwelling unit on it. It's going to be continued. I understand that you're going to be continuing it. And if I speak now, I want to speak to a larger question because I've been studying this for the last two weeks or so. If I speak now, I can come back in two weeks' time and the public hearing is still, is still open and I can, so I'll address the specifics of that, of the, and I can test it. I want you to know I don't want you to do it, but having said, or to approve it, the special exception. But I want to speak to the larger question because I'm almost embarrassed that I live in a town that has the language of Section 9 of Article 7 in it. You are all volunteers. I don't formally volunteer for anything. Sometimes I get involved with other people and supporting them and I'm appreciative of what you do. But this ADU thing is so badly drawn, you wonder if a real lawyer ever actually looked, and maybe some of you are lawyers, so I don't want to alienate you, but I really wonder if somebody with any acute sense of what goes on in the real world read it. You're combining, I'm not sure how familiar you are with it necessarily, but you're combining uses for agricultural workers, it seems to me, never quite say that, but then you're combining that with agricultural workers on one hand, the second hand, you have wealthy people, folly farm, you know, who have a lot of land and maybe need people on site to manage the property, do whatever you do when you have 400 or 500 acres or you want footmen or something for your carriages, whatever the case may be. And then you're dealing with people who nominally want to expand their home. I think that's what they think they're doing at some point in time, to accommodate a relative, maybe an ailing relative, probably older, and to give them a place of where they can be cared for or dealt with, and maybe it's financial, they don't have money to live on their own. So you have, you're combining these three uses. If you have, if you're doing tobacco someplace and you have 30, you know, I'm going to say Jamaicans who come in, and I think they still fly in to pick up, you know, pick tobacco. When I worked a little bit of agriculture in my life, it's not easy work, and you have to have a place for them to sleep at night because it's cheaper for them and cheaper for you. At least you have them there to do the work. When you have to pick, you have to pick. So you say for some reason 1,000 square feet. I'm not sure what's going on there. Why limit them to 1,000?
Excuse me. This is a public hearing for this specific application.
Right.
We are reconsidering our zoning regulations over the next months, and we will have public hearings to discuss the details of, I know that particular area has been some concern of some of the people on the board here.
Good.
So I think your comments would be better served delivered at that time.
If that's true, I ask staff to let me know when it's going to happen. If I don't, then I'm on the email list for the.
It's a public, it will be publicly notified as well, so.
I'll just say it's perverse that why you, why this hearing, thank you, why this hearing was extended or suspended until next week, two weeks from now, was that the applicant didn't have his affidavit that he was going to live there on property. That was one of the reasons I understood from Mr. Glidden, and that's part of your package, I assume. We shouldn't be getting an affidavit from him as to who he is and where he lives. Who we should be getting an affidavit from is the person who's going to occupy the ADU. We want to know who he or she is, because if you want to ruin this town and you want to drag everybody's real estate values down and the quality of life we enjoy, just allow everybody with a garage to pop up the roof, put some dormers on, create an automatic 400 or 500 square foot property, rental property, and let them enjoy $1,500 a month rent or something, we'll wreck this town. This ADU stuff is just a, it's a misnomer for rental properties, and that will kill this town. I'm going to be back, thank you, and I'll just, I have some more to say, but I'll stop now. I'll be back in two weeks, and then I'll be back, frankly, when you reconsider.
Right, this is, this language has been in existence for, I believe, 10 or 12 years at least.
1,000 too.
So anyway.
Badly drawn. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this application? So let us continue that until the 25th as well. The next is the application of Cumberland Farms, and I think they're here to make a presentation, so perhaps I'd entertain a motion to adjust our agenda to consider the.
We have a public hearing set for July 25th.
Which? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's not going to happen. Right, okay. Go ahead.
Even though it's not, we're not, what do we have to do today?
Just for clarity, it's on your agenda as a placeholder that you scheduled the hearing for the 25th.
Right, so we don't open it. I'm sorry. It was my fault. Okay, so there's nothing there except that we will hear it on the 25th.
These people know it's summer, nobody comes to public hearings in the summer, everybody's on vacation.
Right.
Like happy season, September.
The next two are to schedule public hearings. I have more. You've got more. That's to schedule a public hearing, right?
No, that's, okay, then you're over.
1633.
Receipt of.
Just a second, two for us.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you flipped one page.
I'm, okay, here we are. Right, okay. So we're at application 1614, which, the public hearing, we want to continue to 25th , the applicant's request, so there's nothing to be done there. TJ Donahue, we can open that public hearing and continue it.
Sorry, we did that.
So we did that?
Yep.
I thought we did that.
Kevin, you open the hearing relative to application 1626, but 1627 is not identified in that earlier section.
Mr. Chairman, just, if I may.
Yes.
Agenda item 1626 is the special permit. There are two separate applications associated with that.
Site plan approval.
There's a special exception and there is a site plan approval, so they are pairs, two separate items. They do run on two separate time clocks also.
So we should open this?
So under Agenda Item 1626, you've already continued that hearing to 7:25 and no additional action is required. But under application 16-27, that's for site plan approval, you have 65 days to act, and as and to, staff would recommend that you table action on that this evening because you still have a hearing open with a special exception.
That's not a public hearing.
That's not a public.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion regarding application 1627 of TJ Donahue, Agent Simsbury Land Trust owner for site plan approval, Phase 1, to table this until our 7:26, may? 7:25. 7:25.
Second?
Was that Jackie?
Jackie, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have application 1628 of Frank Luca, Powderman Spirits, for special exception. Public hearing has been closed, so we're here.
No, this is not that one.
Continue. That's the next one. All right, 1629, we're getting there. Frank Grillo, agent, and we've closed that public hearing, and now we can take action on that if we wish. Any comments from?
Yeah, I would support approval, but I would eliminate entirely the.
Number two.
Number two.
I agree, sir. I agree.
I agree also.
I agree too. Want to make a motion?
All right, there's another discussion on this?
Another discussion?
Nope. All right, Mr. Chairman, regarding application.
1609.
1609, application for special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section 8 of the Simsbury zoning reg, on behalf of Frank Grillo for a retail liquor license located at 1610 Lot Meadow Street. We approve the application for this special exception, well, for the special exception subject to the following conditions. One, the approvals for retail liquor license. Two, parking spaces shall be restrikt in accordance with the approved site plan. Three, handicap parking stalls shall be restrikt with a new sign being installed in order to address potential ADA access concerns. And four, approval is only for liquor license signage will require separate approvals. In granting this special exception, commission finds that the applicant has demonstrated compliance to the criteria for granting special exceptions outlined in Article 7B10.
I have a question. It's listed as 1629.
1629, not 16.
1629, okay. The memo's got it.
Type 01.
1629, correct that.
Thank you.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Set to, hi Donna. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Did Simsbury want to look at that one?
I'm just looking at, application 1630 of Dr. Senator Hope. We can have discussion and possible action.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Dr. Hope was on your agenda two weeks ago, a little over two weeks ago, I think it's actually three, but he was awaiting final review from, design review, favorable review on this application. We were just reading timeframe wise for the posting of the property per the regulations. Staff has recommended approval of this application. There are a couple of conditions placed upon that application and Mr. Glidden's memo specific to the removal of a deck during the building permit or zoning compliance process. There's a conflict with an existing side yard with the chirps at this point in time. Again, staff would recommend approval. Again, staff would recommend approval, and it did get favorable review from Design Review.
Is that recommended?
Should be in your packet.
No, I don't see it.
I don't have it. Is it attached to something else?
I don't seem to have a copy of those conditions. Could we repeat those conditions for us? Do you recommend?
The primary aspect associated with any motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, is the condition that prior to a final certificate of occupancy, a deck located in the northeast corner of the property be removed because it is in conflict with the side yard setback associated with the easterly property boundary. That deck may be replaced with a granite landing or a granite piece of stone and the approximate dimensions of three feet by five feet. There's this doorway there that they built a deck with no building permits. It may still need a, we'll call it a stoop.
Yep.
And if it's a granite slab, it won't be considered a structure, so it may...
Oh, so it's not grandfathered in because it was never permitted?
It was never permitted.
And the easement language is done from last time?
The easement language has been filed.
Do we have James' written motion here, or...
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, it is missing from the packet.
Or Mike? You guys don't even have it.
Give me a moment, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we could approve the application, to approve the application with the provision that the deck...
We can just go ahead and write it.
You're going to write it?
Yeah. I have no question. I just have to write it down.
There's a lot of conditions here.
Yeah. We got to write it out.
Application sixteen thirty-one is still open, so that public hearing is still open, and there's no action that they're taking until public hearing is closed.
Oh, actually, do we have to table that one?
This is the table of the public hearings. This is for the special exceptions, always continued. Site plan approval would not require a public hearing. We have to take that. Special exception requires the public hearing be closed, and then we'll take it up.
the applicant shall remove an existing deck located on the eastley side of the building, which is presently in violation of the side yard setback. The deck may be replaced with a seven-inch-deck by three-foot by five-foot granite step.
Do we also need that thing to give you guys authority to make concessions? Or there's nothing?
There wouldn't be any.
No hearing yet.
It's an existing... And I only say that, Kevin. It's an existing building. It's an existing parking spot. The only thing...
Not worth...
Is the deck slash porch area. So, again, our standard language that the director may have, the ability to modify a slight dimension in the field, there isn't anything proposed to be done except the removal of this deck.
Mr. Chairman, regarding application sixteen thirty, Douglas M. Hope, DMD agent at Simsbury Subcometary Association, Inc., owner for a site plan amendment for expansion of the finished office space onto the existing porch on the property located in Pine Kettle Road, assessors map G-ten, block two oh two, lot eighteen, zone SC one, that we approve this application with the exception read by staff.
Do you have that? Irene?
I'll have to get his number. Okay.
Okay. You second it?
I'll second it.
Jackie seconded. Any further discussion of it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, that application is approved. Sixteen thirty-one is continued. Sixteen thirty-two, that public hearing was continued to seven twenty-five, so the direction on...
About thirty-two?
It's coming up.
Four oh five.
It's up here.
Your page is in my page.
If that's not continued, that's simply not...
It's over here on our agenda.
I don't have that on my agenda. It's number six of public hearings, and at the bottom it says, "Public hearing is set for seven twenty-five."
Right.
I'm missing.
Oh, yeah. Was it just continued?
Yeah, so we don't do anything yet.
We don't have to do anything with the application.
Right.
Okay. So, they were on their business.
Glad to do business. Application sixteen thirty-three, we just wanted to schedule a public hearing for special exception pursuant to Article seven, Section six A. Kevin, you want to read that?
Okay. Application sixteen thirty-three of Zirang, agent E and A... I'm not sure what that is. E and A, I and G. Simsbury Common LP owner for a special exception pursuant to Article seven, Section E six A of the Simsbury zoning regulations for the expansion of a restaurant into existing retail space in a B three zone on the property located at five thirty, Bushy Hill Road, assessors map B twenty, block five oh eight, lot zero zero one, B, zone B three.
And we want to open that when? Is there a recommended time the staff has?
The difficulty, Mr. Chairman, is you meet two weeks from now, which will not be sufficient time to open the hearing.
And we just don't meet again until...
And then you don't meet for... Until the middle of September, which is within your next regularly scheduled meeting. Is within.
So, we open the public hearing at our first September meeting?
What's the date of that meeting? What we will need to do on this one, Mr. Chairman, is schedule the hearing for the twenty-fifth. We will do our best with the legal notices, but you will be running tight for timeframes. We do not have an extension from the applicant at this point in time.
Yeah, because they have to do the information, sign for fifteen days.
So, the twenty-fifth is okay?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mr. Chairman, what we will do is we'll work with the applicant to get extensions to potentially continue that hearing from the twenty-fifth to your scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, regarding application sixteen thirty-three of Zirang, I'd like to make a motion that we set the hearing date for July twenty-fifth.
Second?
Second.
Jackie seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Application sixteen thirty-four for a special exception pursuant to Section H.
If I need to read that here too? Application sixteen thirty-three of Zirang, agent E and A, I and G.
This is sixteen thirty-four.
Sixteen thirty-four.
Okay. Zirang, agent E and A, I and G, Simsbury Commons LP owner for special exception pursuant to Article ten, Section eight, H of the Simsbury zoning regulations for full liquor license on the property located at five thirty, Bushy Hill Road, assessors map B twenty, block five oh eight, lot zero zero one, B, zone B three. And, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set the public hearing for this for July twenty-fifth.
Second?
Second.
Second by Donna. Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if we can coordinate with the applicant in the next coming two weeks or prior to your next regularly scheduled meeting to get the extensions to perhaps have the hearings in September, we would like you to bear with us and perhaps reschedule the opening of the hearings until September. We just can't do it without that extension request.
Right. Okay.
Well, we couldn't continue the hearing, right?
You could open and continue, which then if someone made the claim that they weren't properly noticed, you haven't closed the hearing, you've continued it, there would still be due process associated with that, and they could come in September. But again, we need an extension to get from September twenty-five to September nineteen.
You mean July?
July twenty-fifth to September nineteen.
Okay.
Okay. And we have application sixteen thirty-five, Mitchell, for a site plan amendment for changes to the facade of the building located at three eighty-four Hot Meadow Street. This went to design review today, is that correct?
It did not go today to design review because we just received revised plans. They're willing to put it on their agenda in two weeks.
So, we probably shouldn't act on this until after design review has reviewed it. Is there someone here who wants to speak? Mark, do you want to?
I'll start real quick. I'm Mark Mitchell, president of Mitchell Auto Group. And for some years, we've gone through quite a transition in the auto industry, as probably everybody is aware of. We had Volvo and Saab at three eighty-four Hot Meadow Street, and now we're here to request... We've got a... When Saab went out of business, we obviously had excess capacity, and what we're doing is trying to fill that capacity up with a new brand called Quicklane, which is a service Midas-type concept and would be for general repairs, general auto repairs. It's owned by Ford, and because we're a Ford dealer in Windsor, we are allowed to have this brought to Simsbury because it's in our area of responsibility. We also will be working with you with a new concept for Volvo. Volvo, as you may know, has a new rebirth, a new ownership, and so we're working with them. I just signed the contract today with them, with their architects. So, what we would like to do is we're looking for all the support and all the help we can from the community and the zoning board to try to do this in an efficient way that's going to fit with the town and the character of the town. I did bring a couple... Did you want me to show those at this time, Jamie, or not?
The commission has your original architectural collaboration with the last contract packet, and today your packet will have the required for the Quicklane.
Okay.
Excludes any architectural proposals for the Volvo dealership until they kind of separated the discussion. And they are really focusing on the application process associated with Quicklane.
So, what's going to change on the Quicklane and the Volvo? What's going to change? I mean, because we're looking at a whole building, and it's actually depicting Volvo service entrance, and one drawing here shows a different parking lot configuration than...
Right. In your original... In your original packet, it includes the Volvo dealership. In their amended application, they've moved the architecture of the Volvo, not only seeking permits for Quicklane's architecture. Again, there wasn't... There's no intent from Mr. Mitchell to disguise...
So, I don't think...
The long-term process. We didn't want to complicate the process with the discussion of what Volvo's architecture was and how it relates to the...
You know what I'm saying? I just think it would be fair for us to see how the whole thing comes together.
I agree. I absolutely... And I think that, of course, our challenge is going to be to take two brands and have two brands coexist, and that's our... That'll be our challenge, and to get it accepted.
Do you have one drawing that shows both already, or...
Oh, I have...
I mean, the building's going to stay the same, right?
Yeah. There's no footprint changes that we're going to propose. The footprint's exactly the same. So, although we looked at other options, we feel that the efficiency of it is worth the time.
So, what does change this?
So, is the Quicklane five days?
Hold on. We've got a couple of different questions.
We got one question going here.
Just for clarity, to answer Mr. Post's question with regards to footprints, there's in essence, three buildings on this site. There's the red one that shows the Quicklane, which is the Saab repair shop and where the car wash is. There's the Volvo dealership, which is adjacent to Hot Meadow, which is in existence today, and there's the auto shop or auto body shop to the rear of the property. We have seen footprints for two of the buildings, that front of Hot Meadow, where the Southern Lee building, which is the old Saab, and proposed Quicklane, where the footprint does change slightly. We've also seen architectural renderings in a very preliminary manner for the Volvo dealership. The application process for taking a brick building and changing the architecture of that, in staff's view, is far more complex than changing the architecture of the existing maintenance facility. So, again, they were honing in on the change they needed in an efficient, timely manner, which was the Quicklane, and discussions didn't want to necessarily complicate the permitting process by combining the two. I think to Mr. Mitchell's point, they're potentially equally as important, but running on different time tracks.
Yes.
Okay? Quicklane being the more prominent, time-sensitive application, and the Volvo dealership, a conversation that needs to begin, but will be subject to an additional permitting process. Design Review has what was handed what you have so that they have an opportunity to review it and have an educated conversation when they bring it up on their agenda two weeks from now. So, again, the original packet shows a preliminary kind of feel for what the Volvo may look like or the proposing that it may look like. But the second one that you have given today was a refinement of that initial architecture based on a conversation we had last Wednesday with Phase Zero and their attempt to address some of staff's issues associated with the original building architecture. And again, we received them late, wet late Friday, actually after hours.
So, as long as Mark is here, though, he could show the... And clean out the Quicklane drawings.
Absolute, yeah.
So, and I don't know how much... How much of Matt's vacation schedule... They, both Matt and Chris, both are on vacations, so I said, "Well, I'm going to be here," so who's better than me? Great deals are close to anything. So, this is... So, this is what you have now, as you may remember. Okay? And this is a building that has been added on to eleven times. My grandfather came here from Scotland in nineteen eleven, and we incorporated in nineteen twenty-two, and that the core building that this building's in is... Was built in nineteen thirty. So... So there's a lot of history there. And as real old founders will remember, and I'm sure you've probably checked, Jamie, I don't know if you looked at the old prints, but the road, actually Route 10, went right almost through the building, the center of that building, and there was, and went up to an overpass over the railroad and then go back around. So it was, it was kind of interesting. But anyway, so that's what's there now currently, and this is what we're proposing. So, and I know it's long overdue, the cleanup, and we're going to be, that would be the, that's what we're looking to do right now. And for me, the expedience would be that we'd like to be able to start at least this project's construction part of that. So I think it's considerably nicer than what's there, for sure. That's our old Saab parts area, and what we'll be doing is cutting leaves and glassing that. And then the office for the Quicklane will be there.
Can we ask what your concerns were?
The original proposal, some of the architectural treatments under our regulations would be considered, potentially be considered parts of the signage, given the corporate color and scheme. So they have softened the appearance of that color scheme, including the signage. Quicklane has different options with regards to signage, some that are more subtle than others. Staff was able to articulate a more subtle design that Quicklane has used in other communities that perhaps may fit more appropriately on Hop Meadow, and those are some of the revisions that we've seen. We also discussed some additional articulation on the top of the building, so you have a true cornice. They raised the parapet a little bit to hide some of the HVAC and panels that are on the roof, and added some banding, changed out the garage doors, added a panel at the bottom to start to add a little more architecture to the building. So again, we haven't had an opportunity to sit back down with Phase Zero, but look forward to working with them as well as Mitchell Auto Group to come to something that both Design Review and the Zoning Commission can view very favorable.
It looks nice.
Did I see an early rendering, Mark? They had something going on in the tire shop and they had to do a quick work.
Yes, there is. And we will be bringing that in also, so.
At our next meeting? Is that subject to DRB in two weeks?
The, yes, the whole, again, the whole building, and I would, again, we had a meeting last week, they were trying to get information to us on Friday so that we could disseminate it and have it available for you this evening and potentially Design Review, realizing two of the key staff members from Phase Zero were going away this week. So again, they did, I believe, as much as they could from an elevation standpoint for tonight's meeting. If you look at the application, it included components of the car wash that in the revised plans we received Friday aren't on the new elevations. My assumption potentially is they're still part of the application process, they just haven't had an opportunity to render the back, the northeast quadrant of the building.
I guess, Jamie, what would it take for me to be able to, to get at least permission to start the construction, or the destruction?
If I may for clarity, Mr. Chairman, just so we can talk, I guess, apples to apples, right now you have a rendering for the Hop Meadow elevation for about three-quarters of the existing building. You have an elevation for the southeast corner and southeast and southwest corner, and you have the rear. There was additional architecture for the southeasterly elevation and the easterly elevation. When we got revisions late Friday afternoon, that southern elevation and the easterly elevation weren't on the revised plans, the applicant would have the ability to limit his application in essence to that southeasterly portion of the building and make the rest of the building subject to a supplement application. Although if they can, you know, he has two weeks or slightly less than two weeks to supplement his application and include that southern and eastern elevation. There's still a discussion because this has a Volvo component to it, that northwesterly elevation, that they may not be able to resolve during this permitting process, and that would be subject to another one. Again, that Volvo component correlates to redoing the Volvo dealership. And that's a very different style and character to the architecture that...
So we really need to, I mean, we haven't had this conversation, but it's, you know, that part is, as Jamie knows, because he's done this in lots, lots of different times, where these manufacturers come in, I've got the contract here, and you know, they have their expectations, their brand cues that they want, and certainly how does that fit into every community? And for sure, for us, it's to give Volvo to say, yeah, you know, it's okay, and for Simsbury to say, yeah, it's okay, and have it make sense.
So you're looking for an approval for that one?
The one part.
Design Review has not approved it?
Design Review will take it up for consideration in two weeks.
And then is that when we're scheduling a hearing?
You go to the other part of the hearing. This is only site plan approval.
Site plan approval will have, we don't have Design Review's recommendation.
Should have Design Review's recommendation, that's two weeks.
So that would be the first time that...
So what's that, when is that, is that the meeting on the 25th?
25th.
That's fine. And it's just, we want to get it done, we want to do it, we want to do it right, so.
Again, and what Mr. Mitchell has discussed with staff is his ability, perhaps in your late July meeting, which would be the 25th, or your earliest, or you only meet once and so to, at your September meeting, to come in and start the discussion on the architecture for the remaining buildings on Simms.
You confused about the Volvo service component.
That is not part of this application.
It's just there. How can you?
Stop in the middle of the...
How can you stop in the middle of the wall?
That's going to be interesting.
Well, they did it before with Saab.
Yeah, but they have a different kind of architecture, it's going to be kind of...
Before with Saab.
I mean, we're, we're working on that now, so, who knows? Hopefully, they're going to act. It still turns into the summer, summer, with people scheduled and vacations.
What I can do, Mr. Chairman, is I can ask Phase Zero, it's subtle here, but there is a break on the third tree from the right of new building and then old building, so the last three garage bays maintain the existing brick and fascia treatment. And the five garage bays to the right contain the new proposed architecture.
So the door separates...
Subtle on this rendering.
The door, the main door separates the Volvo...
I think it's one, one beyond that.
One beyond that.
One beyond the main door?
It's potentially just one beyond that.
Oh, there's only...
Was there six bays or five bays?
It's hidden behind that tree.
Three, main door, three. There's three. So this isn't right. So this shows the main door half way. Yeah. So this is...
Is that not it? That's the door she's talking about, this door?
Yes.
And that's the one, three, four, five, and then three to the other side.
And three.
Those actually, they kind of do the same.
Correct, there's three.
What they're doing, they're rendering the same garage door, but if you look at the treatment at the roof line, you're seeing...
Right?
Yes.
It's, again, it's very subtle.
So what were you going to propose?
So these, see these this year? That's not there.
Mr. Chairman, so you can clearly see the change of new versus old, if they remove the trees from the elimination?
No.
Just one of them, so that you can see where that line is. And again, it's between the, there's eight garage doors, five are proposed for Quicklane, three retain with Volvo right now, so that's kind of the division line.
Yeah, just in that... So you're going to ask Phase Zero to just take out a tree so we can...
I could ask if Mr. Mitchell allows them to, they can clarify.
Okay.
Look, from our standpoint, Design Review's got to pass on it before we...
Correct.
Do we have to do anything to continue it, or just?
A motion to table.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to table this, that was page...
1635.
1635 until July 25th.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Okay, two things. One is we've got a presentation by Mike Gerard, and there is, I guess we can talk about the special reading of the 18th...
Yeah, we'll actually do that. Okay, while Jeremy sets up, I just got a few things I'd like to mention, I know it's late. First of all, I want to thank the opportunity to bring our proposed project in front of the commission on a limited basis, because it's a lot to us. Our plan is, over the next couple of weeks, is to go, we've already been to Design Review this evening, we're here now, and then we're going to be planning tomorrow night, and then on the 19th, we're going to do conservation and then the weapons, and then if need be, we'll come back here on the 25th if there's anything that needs to be summarized, anything that needs to be said, whatever. Hopefully, we go through this nice and smoothly, and that's the plan anyway, and we can kind of go from there. But we're going to, if you need us back, we can come back on the 25th. We've been working over the past couple of years, it's quite, I don't want to say on and off, but as the system allows us to, and basically, we've come up with what we feel is a very good plan for our property on Iron Horse Boulevard, 32 to 36 Iron Horse Boulevard. The people that have been involved have been, our engineers have been Ed Lallion Associates and Malone and McBroom, and Debbie Bernard from Bernard Partnership was, is working with us on marketing, and our architects are Union Studio from Providence, Rhode Island. And Jeremy is here tonight, Jeremy's an associate with them, and Don Powers, who is the founding partner, couldn't be here tonight, but has been active in the whole process. Also, I want you to know that the town staff has been very good with us in the last couple of years. We've been in and out of here with different plans, different developers, trying to get something, something concrete, something good, something that we could proceed with. And it took a long time, but here we are, and Jamie Rabbit, Tom Cook, Mike Liddon, and Jeff Shad, been great. Very brief background on the property. You all know it's our property where our shop is. It's comprised of 13.86 acres bordered by a couple hundred acres of, several hundred acres, I should say, of open space, state and town open space. It's also, in 2011 was, with the town charrette, was designated Zone SC5, Simsbury Center 5, and it's the only piece of property in Simsbury Center 5. It's just that one zone was made for that one property. We've tried, and we've done our best to try to follow that in our design concepts. Over the past couple of years, we've looked through, I can't tell you how many plans, how many developers we've talked to, individuals that have come up with ideas of what should be on this 13 acres, and we feel now that these plans that we have tonight represent the best of all those plans plus more. And we feel that we have a very unique residential development that'll add a lot to the town center. We're looking forward for your input and your constructive input, and hopefully you like what you see. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeremy Lake with Union Studio.
Can you spell your last name?
L-A-K-E. And just to introduce who we are, Union Studio, as Mike mentioned, we're based in Providence, Rhode Island. We were founded in 2001 by Don Powers, who Mike had mentioned, he's the gentleman standing in the middle, in the back, the glasses and the reddish hair. I've been with Union Studio for four years now, and our mission is really to use our skills as architects and urban designers to make a civic contribution to any project that we work on. So no matter how big or small, we try to understand its larger context and how it can make a contribution to the community within which it resides. We provide a number of services related to architectural design, community design, design guidelines, charrettes, all the things related to architectural, and again, community, community design. The project location you guys are probably, are familiar with, but I think it's still helpful to see it sort of in a larger context. It sits, as you can see, right on the, right on the edge of the River Valley. So looking north and east, you have these spectacular views out over the River Valley, and then directly to the west, you have literally Simsbury Center. So it's a very interesting site because it's both at the very edge of town and also right, very much in the middle of town. So it's a really incredible site with a lot of great opportunities. Simsbury Meadow and the Performing Arts Center just to the south of it as well, another great amenity, and really makes the site feel as though it's very much surrounded by open space, again, even though it's very much right in the middle of town. The two dashes, the smaller circle is a quarter-mile radius or a five-minute walk, the larger radius is a half-mile radius or a 10-minute walk. So really, just wanted to point out that this site also really benefits from having walkable access to a lot of the shops and stores and restaurants and things along Hop Meadow. So really, a lot of great amenities for this, for this site, and a great opportunity for the town.
Just as a point of clarification, though, the diagram as drawn doesn't extend very far down to the north on Iron Horse Boulevard, and I'm assuming that's not Gerard property then, after that. You're depicting here just the land that...
That's correct. The red outline is, yeah, I'm sure it's parcel, it's three, three parcels technically?
The three parcels.
Three parcels technically. So here is what that looks like today. This is the operation they have out there currently, and so at the moment, you know, they've done a good job of trying to tuck it away so it doesn't have too much of a visual impact by having berms along the, this is rotated, so now the top is west and the southern edges. But in reality, when you're out on the site, you realize you have these amazing views out over the River Valley. To the south, if those scrubby trees and the berm weren't there, you'd have pretty nice views also to the Performing Arts Center in Simsbury Meadow. And again, Simsbury Center is basically just off of the slide there to the top with a more or less direct connection via Pent Road, which is a private road, but is in alignment with, with our access at that point. This is a survey of the site, again, not a whole lot to see here, other than there are just a few buildings out on site that obviously would be removed, and you can kind of see the topography a little bit at the edges to the top, which is west, the berm that they've built, again, to kind of visually screen the site, a similar berm along the southern end. When you get to the east, that's actually dropping off, so that the lines you see there, there's probably a six-to-10-foot grade change that drops off. Likewise, along the northern edge, you have quite a bit of grade change as it drops down into the Barber Cove and the sort of natural area around it. Again, as Mike mentioned, there have been a number of studies done on the site already. The top left shows you what was thought about for the site when the, when the larger charrette was done for the Form Based Code several years ago. So you can see that there was always an idea of putting some significant amount of development here, taking advantage of its location really being the right spot in town to do some higher density sort of things. The plan on the top right was by Principal Group that was done on behalf of the town of Simsbury, again, showing in this case a mixture of multifamily and single-family and townhouses, a range of types, which I think is consistent with what we would like to propose here. And then again, the bottom just showing you that there's been any number of other iterations done for the site. The images you see up here probably range anywhere from 160 to 250 units just on this parcel. Again, this just being previous studies that had been done by others. Another issue that we've had out here, when the FEMA maps were drawn, it showed a lot of this area as a floodplain. Mike, in combination with the town, were able to clarify that through FEMA and get the approvals to make it very clear that the land is outside of the floodplain, at least the area that's defined by that light blue line. So we have a nice big sort of flat area that we can develop that's still got those great views out over, over the River Valley. But there's, this is just highlighting the fact that a lot of work has already been done to date, just setting the stage for what we're proposing.
What is that little cactus little thing in the middle?
That is one of the designations of the floodplain. That says 2014 corrected FEMA AE Zone 100-year boundary. So at the moment, the way the site works is it kind of grades down towards the center where there's a settlement area, because again, currently it's all just dirt, so when you get a big rainstorm, it all drains to there and settles in there. So that's kind of the way it's currently graded. We would regrade the site for what we're doing. But that's what, all those things designate various different things.
FEMA says that's floodplain or not?
Want to clarify?
Yeah, to clarify, the property is totally out of the floodplain, and the original part of the property was shown in the floodway, which was, was not correct. Malone and McBroom took that through.
took that through, and it was a complicated process. We're also going to fill the site two feet, an average of two feet throughout the site. But that's more for aesthetics and also for the sanitary source, so we can get it to drain, a lot of, to drain by gravity toward the street. So by raising that, I think that'll, that'll, you know, definitely helps, but that was part of the application also. Did I miss anything on that, Mike?
There's no wetlands around.
And also, just to clarify too, and I was talking before, this is informal, totally informal. We know we have to come back with an application. We know we have to come back in the future. So I just wanted to make sure that we're under that, we're operating under that.
Thanks to their filming in front of wetlands, right?
Yeah, Mike, you're gonna meet with wetlands in a couple of weeks.
Oh, definitely. And we'll have to go through whatever processes needed in the zoning regulations to get, for the approval. This is basically so we can get open feedback from you so that we can make whatever corrections we need to make on the final plans.
Okay. And so here again is an image of the existing site. I just wanted to walk you guys through sort of what we looked at when we came to the project, again, having known there were many other iterations done previously. But what, with what we understood and with what we saw out there, this was our thought process that got us to the design we're talking about tonight. First and foremost, at the top there, you can see the yellow dash line. We know that is, today, that's the primary connection, and we think it would continue to make sense as the primary connection. That is essentially how you access the site, but it is directly across from Pent Road. If we continue to use that as a primary connection, it would allow the intersection as it's designed to continue the way it is. So that was just an obvious thing, but again, these are the things that we try to make sure we understand. There's the existing hiker-biker trail that runs along Iron Horse Boulevard, which again is another great asset for this potential future community, a lot of great public access, and certainly would be something that the residents here would, would take advantage of. I began talking a little bit about the views already, the views out to the, to the River Valley and, and the potential views south towards the Performing Arts Center and Simsbury Meadows. So again, views on, almost all the way around it, honestly. In the middle of the site, there's an existing tree that's currently kind of in tough shape, but we're hopeful that maybe we can love it and nurture it and bring it back to health because it'd be great to keep at least one tree in the middle of the community, because again, currently it's mostly just a moonscape with the dirt. So we still haven't had an assessment done on the condition of that tree, but again, it was just something we were thinking about and hopeful for. So the first logical thing for us was imagining that, that Pent Road was effectively extended all the way out to the River Valley, so that all the way from Simsbury Center, you could have this both visual but literal connection that could deliver you out, out to the, to the edge and the, and the views beyond. Most of the schemes contemplated a sort of loop, a secondary loop road that would then go through the rest of the site. In this case, the road would very much hug up against the southern and eastern edges so that those amazing views could be had by everyone, instead of putting private units backing to those views. The idea is that you put the circulation out so that everybody gets to take advantage of, of those views. And we thought there was some logic, looking at it a little more carefully, to also thinking of there being some sort of connection through the middle of the site in a north-south direction, if for nor the reason, and to really reinforce the connection and visual sightlines down into Simsbury Meadow itself. From there, we decided that if there was gonna be some open space, we would like to sort of arrange it around that existing tree. So that would be the sort of more internalized communal green, but also along that eastern edge out by the River Valley where the grades drop down, that's currently an open field, if you will, and we thought it made sense to still take advantage of that as a, as a wide-open communal space. So the resulting developable area, you can see, ends up being this sort of four-and-a-half block scheme, and this is the basis by which we did all of our preliminary studies. The little red asterisks there, we also realized that there was an opportunity there because currently the grades kind of jut out, so we have a place where we could put some kind of gazebo or some kind of public moment that would take advantage of the views out. And in a similar way, we think something like that would be appropriate where we're making a, a connection out to Simsbury Meadow. So these are some of the initial schemes that we came up with, that we designed and reviewed internally, but also then shared with Jamie and town staff as to sort of where our thinking was. And you can see here, compared to the earlier schemes, that were up to as many as 250 units, we're more in the sort of 135 to 155 range. If you look carefully at some of the schemes, particularly the two up top, you can see on the top left, that connection from Pent Road, we thought of as literally as a roadway that would bring you out, but the north-south connection might make more sense as a, as a linear green, as opposed to being yet another road through the developments. And then in the top right, we actually flipped that idea on its head, so that the thought was maybe the Pent Road extension was the green that delivers you out, so more of a pedestrian connection, but not necessarily a vehicular connection. So we were looking at a number of those sorts of things, slightly different block sizes on the different blocks, different unit distributions and, and unit typologies. The red footprints are the multifamily buildings that we were conceiving up for here. So we explored a full range everywhere from the top left, which are more of a traditional double-loaded corridor, kind of an apartment building. All the way down to the lower left, we were looking at these much smaller, you know, three-story, nine-unit little walk-ups, and the ones on the right were things in between the two. So we were trying to understand what was appropriate, what was gonna fit, what were the pros and cons of each of those things. Again, these are the kinds of things we also shared with Jamie and talked through with him. So coming out of those preliminary discussions, the decisions that we did make was, first and foremost, that north-south connection, we thought that was the appropriate place to do some sort of internal linear muse, if you will, instead of a roadway, keeping an actual roadway as the extension of Pent Road, again, because there's some logic to the fact that that is the current primary entrance and makes sense to continue to be the primary entrance. But we liked the notion of there being some kind of green space at that access entry point. So that was an idea that we wanted to carry forward in the proposed scheme. We thought it made the most sense, whatever multifamily we did, to generally orient it along Iron Horse Boulevard. We have a very wide right-of-way. It would be a good way of creating the sort of public face to the larger community and would marry up nicely with some of the commercial uses across the street. And then internally, we would imagine having some multifamily sort of at the head of that internal linear green. When we looked at then, the next level of density down, our sort of townhouse types, our sort of middle density, the thought was to finish out Iron Horse Boulevard in the top right corner, to actually locate them around that centralized green so that we can really frame it and make it feel like it's an outdoor room, if you will, and have a few buildings there at the, sort of the southern end of that linear green, sort of as a bookend, if you will. And then the remaining areas of the blocks would be wrapped by our lower density, our single, single-family detached and some duplexes. So this was sort of our logic of getting to the scheme that we're talking about here tonight, which is shown here. So hopefully, you can see a number of those features are in there at the top where Pent Road and Iron Horse come into the community. We have a small formal green at that point. You can see the multifamily buildings along Iron Horse Boulevard. I'll show those in a little more detail in a bit, but the intention is to bridge the gap between the largest increment and the smallest increment we were looking at, thinking of it as if it were two smaller buildings that happened to be connected further back from the streets that we can share circulation, for instance. And I'll show those in a, in a different view where you'll understand that the, the goal there is to really break down the scale of those, so they don't appear as large as the footprint might suggest here. You can kind of get a sense of that cottage court running up through the middle from left to right or from north to south. We decided that was the appropriate location for a lot of the single-family units, so we could create almost a cottage court. So your lowest-density stuff is in this more intimate space within the middle of the community. And then as you get down to the bottom, you can see that existing tree we're hoping to keep being the basis of an informal green that then feeds out to and connects to that great lawn. So in this scheme, we're currently at 135 units, but again, I think our target is still in that 135 to 155 range. But we think this is more or less the framework that we're thinking about, so it's probably a matter of when we dial into the unit types and things, we're gonna see if we can creatively get a few more units back into it while still keeping the sort of character that we're trying to achieve here. I'll also point out while we're here that one of the other organizing features was that along the streets and along the, the green spaces, that's where the units front. So you have your front door, you have a porch or a stoop that makes a connection at that point, and all of the parking is accessed then from the mid-block, which are those small, what look like roads, but they're really meant to be sort of private parking lanes that access the mid-block. So all of the garage doors are out of view from the public street, they're out of view from the green spaces. That's where we'd like to locate as many of the services as we can. If we can convince the utility companies to put their big green boxes back there, that would be the spot for those. So it's really about trying to organize this public versus private, and I'll have something else that shows that in a little more detail here in a moment. So this is a bird's-eye view of the community. In this case, you're sort of floating in a hot air balloon somewhere between Simsbury Meadow to the left, and that's what we've been referring to as the great lawn there to the right. But you can see it's arranged as a series of blocks where the houses really line the perimeter of those blocks, really creating a strong edge to those green spaces that, that wind their way through. And this is a diagram of just what we're considering sort of the public realm. So the green arrows, the one that starts in the top left, that would be your in Simsbury Center coming down Pent Road, and really showing how that connection really feeds you all the way straight through and out to the River Valley beyond. The other red arrow in the top left, top right corner is starting at one of those multifamily buildings, feeding through that cottage court and make a, a connection out to Simsbury Meadow to the lower left. And then the little vignettes, we're just trying to show a little more detail of some of those spots, but for instance, in the bottom left, you know, where we do meet Simsbury Meadow, we think that'd be a great place to include some sort of terracing of steps that would help deliver you down to the fields, would also provide a place where the residents here could go out when there are concerts and sit and enjoy it as a, as a group. And the other views, again, just showing little snippets of some of those other spaces as they, as they weave their way through. We're gonna leave you a packet with all this stuff too, so you guys can see it in a little more detail. Trying to be mindful at time here tonight. And then this is a diagram that's meant to highlight sort of the more private realm areas. Again, I mentioned the notion of the, the parking and services being in the center. The, the image on the left, it's kind of hard to see, but the idea is that if there was some surface parking, the limited number that might be needed for the multifamily, they'd be in there. You begin to kind of get a sense of all the garage doors that are accessed, again, internal to the block, not, not from the streets themselves. The, the central image on the bottom there, trying to show that with the little limited green spaces, we do have between units, behind units, that's opportunities for us to create some patios or decks, private areas for the residents themselves. So again, it's, it's all about trying to make sure the, the framework of what is public and what is private is very clear as, as an organizing tool for the development of the community here. This is a perspective view. This is along Iron Horse Boulevard where Pent Road would come in. So that is that sort of formal green right at the entry to the community. And what you can begin to see here are the multifamily buildings to the left and a little bit here to the right that are framing that space. And the objective again is that this building here, that's half of the building that you'd see in Footprint, so that's technically 12 units. And even within those 12 units, we would step back the architecture and reduce the massing, so it would feel like a smaller apartment building that had a few additions, and then you get a break before you get to the next one. So it's all about trying to break down the scale of those to make sure that they're still in keeping with the character of the rest of the community. So back behind that, you can begin to see some of the duplexes and single-family homes. Nothing here would be over three stories. We're, we're imagining everything's in the two, two-and-a-half, three-story sort of range. And in this view, you can also begin to see how that Pent Road extended takes you all the way out to the River Valley beyond.
If you could project those, the elevation of those ridge lines forward towards Hot Meadow Street, is that equivalent to a one-story building on Hot Meadow, a two-story?
Yeah, we were talking about that earlier. We think there was, how much grade change from Hot Meadow all the way down to here?
Fifteen to 20.
Yeah, so I think if, if you could do that, it would be like a one-story building relative to Hot Meadow, which is to say, all the shops and everything that are out there, we'll basically screen them. You would never see these peeking over the top of anything from Hot Meadow. And hopefully, you'd see them down the corridors of things like Pent Road. But yeah, the grade change really helps us, the scale of this will feel diminutive compared to Hot Meadow itself. Just a couple of street sections. We won't go into these in great detail, but the idea is that it's, all the roads that we have proposed, which are highlighted in the top left in red, the Loop Road and the Pent Road Extended, all of those would be two-way travel. We would include parallel parking on one side of the street to serve as basically guest parking or bonus parking for the residents that are here as needed. We would expect the streets to be tree-lined streets. Trees are a great way of sort of separating the vehicular realm from the pedestrian realm while also creating shade and obviously creating a lot of character for the community. And here you can begin to get a sense of the fact that every house would have that porch or that front stoop that would be that transitional element from the public realm of the street into the private realm of the home itself. To the left, that's a section through that linear cottage court that's running north-south through the middle of the site. So again, there's no road, there's no vehicular traffic in there. It's just a pedestrian realm sidewalk and landscape areas there for, for residents to use. And then on the right, you can see highlighted in the top right corner, these are those sort of private parking lanes. Again, plenty of room for folks to come and go through there, but that's where you park your car, that's where you access your garage. So again, those things are out of view from, from the streets themselves. These are just some precedents of other projects we've done to start to begin to get a sense of the character of what we would likely do here. In particular, the image on the top left, that's a project in Warwick, New York. It gives you a sense of what that streetscape will feel like, the idea of the porches being the thing that connect the homes to the street, very short setbacks, the sidewalks are out there for, for the pedestrians. It really helps foster a sense of community when folks can be on the front porch and folks can walk by, and there's examples of that here, obviously in Simsbury, so you know what we're talking about here. And in the lower right, that's a project of ours in Concord, Massachusetts, which shows you that sense of that cottage court where there isn't a road running through it, it's just a, a path and landscape area, so that the community here would be sort of a combination of those two things. And then lastly, our ultimate goal here would be to definitely take our cues for the style of the architecture from the existing architecture that's in Simsbury, to make sure that it feels very much like it belongs in Simsbury. Debbie Bernard has been a great resource for us so far and will continue to be for helping us understand what sorts of buildings resonate with, with folks in Simsbury and feel like they belong. But obviously, we're looking at sort of more traditional precedents, a variety of materials, a variety of styles. We'd like to try to replicate that to the degree we can. We certainly wouldn't propose one porch that's used on every house. We'll come up with a number of different variations within the detailing itself. But again, the goal here is to make sure that it's tuned and feels like it's appropriate to Simsbury, you know, not Phoenix, Arizona, not the Cape, really, something that feels like it belongs here. So hopefully, I didn't go through that too fast or too slow, but now's when we really would just like to hear your thoughts, what questions you have, so.
Can you show us any sort of depiction of what the garage is?
Yeah, the closest would be one of the little blowups here. And again, it's difficult to see, but in the top left corner, you can kind of see the little duplex townhouse units. You know, again, the idea is that you just have two residential garage doors on a little apron that would then connect to those rear parking alleys. And on the top left, we're showing even on the multifamily buildings, might have some limited garage spaces for like a third of the units, so a few folks could opt to have a covered parking space if they'd like.
Jeremy, do you think we should pass the paper copies out so they can kind of breeze through?
Yeah, question.
In this design, there's, there's no commercial components at all. There's no services or small retail or anything of that sort.
That was never in the plan.
Mr. Chairman, in the SC5 and the Form Based Code, this is zoned residential. It does not permit anything other than residential.
I thought the whole Form Based Code was to permit the flexibility to do things that were within the form.
The, I believe the intent of a Form Based Code is to drive Form-Based Design, the void of land uses, but when SC1 through SC5 were formulated, when they targeted this specifically to be an SC5, somehow that discussion about allowing the form and not honing in on the uses perhaps was lost or intentionally negated because it's clear in the code that this was targeted for residential, including when Jeremy Lake had the original kind of charrette rendering for this property, that's all residential.
Yeah, I remember being at the charrette, and we targeted this piece of property with the Gerards to be residential. There's gonna be no commercial.
In the Form Based Code, there's approximately 40 acres between St. Mary's Church and the Old Mansion, internal to Iron Horse and Hot Meadow. This represents about 20% of that acre. This is the next, we'll say 10 acres of that, or 15 to bring the floral center to 58. And perhaps when you're doing the Form Based Code, to look at this site in an isolated nature in the northeast quadrant of downtown as not being Class A or Class B residential, commercial, and being Class C, that it may be more appropriate for residential units that support everything that's more centrally located. I wasn't involved in that process, but looking at some of the historic data, that's the way it seemed to bear out.
And I think that's what the reasoning was, they wanted to concentrate redevelopment of the retail.
From my perspective, I probably have two restaurant doors that would go into this site tomorrow if it was under construction, but they would require 100 parking spaces. There's only about 175 total parking spaces for the entire site. Someone to... Someone to sit in a 3,000-square-foot restaurant would want 100 of those. So even a Chili's takes up over an acre of land.
So our Form-Based Code...
No, it did what it was supposed to do, was this piece of property was designated as residential. There's just so much more property in the center that can be addressed and will be developed in the future. I think that was the thinking when they carved out this piece of property. And given that it's also next to the...
I understand what they did.
I absolutely agree with the chairman that the Form-Based Code typically lays out the form devoid of a discussion of uses.
This surprises me.
This is the exception to that within...
This surprises me, I guess. That's what our zone says. Unless we want to change the zones, I guess we have to look at that.
I expect there'll be a lot of lemonade stands here, if that counts for anything.
This is all for sale?
It's for sale, yes. Oh, the house?
Yeah.
No, well, that's a good question. Buildings could either be apartments or they could be condos. And I'm recommending to the people I'm talking to about building it, that they should build these condos and rent them if they want to. So technically, it could be built, be all for sale. And of course, the duplexes and so forth would clearly be for sale. But it'd be the condos or, like I said, apartments. One more thing I want to clarify...
For the multifamily portion?
For the multifamily portion. Only for the multifamily portion would they be condos or apartments, but it would be built as condos so they could rent them if they wanted to. But it depends on what the market is, it depends on how we...
I was gonna say, the multifamily buildings are sex attached by the elevator, so three larger footprints. Those are 72 units of the 135, I think, that are on plan. So about less, about half is the way I think, about half of the multifamily and half are single-family, either detached or single-family attached like a townhouse.
Do we have any low-income units?
No, not at this moment.
How many bedrooms are the single-family, two?
We haven't determined that yet, but I think they can range from one to three.
Well, we have mostly three, mostly three-bedroom, a couple two-plus dens, a couple fours. But we see this as a, you know, very, kind of a community with broad appeal. It could be for the empty nester move-down who does not need high bedroom count, the young couple who doesn't need high bedroom count. We'd like to see, you know, some college kids who are coming back from college find something here for them too, in the town of Simsbury, that's a little cooler, that's walkable, the Starbucks is kind of fun. And that person might be buying a small condo, you know, or renting a small...
So they would be in that price range?
Well, if, in the rentals, if we go with rentals in the multifamily, if that ends up being, you know, rental building, there will be some smaller units in there.
But I do think there are smaller units.
Yeah.
Smaller units, what is that?
We have some studios and one-bedrooms that, in other words, would be 750 square-foot range. We haven't really dialed in all of the footage as yet, but we could envision, you know, some of the apartments being, not these big, what I call suburban apartments, they're not all 500 square-foot apartments.
Yeah, it would be nice to have some units that people on lower income, not low income, but smaller units, in-town that would appeal to people.
This is not the McMansion site, this is not the half-acre, women-and-plus site, this is not the big luxury. This is really, we're trying to make it where a broad age range could actually afford to live here.
We're finding projects like this, they do a great job of what we call the missing middle. Almost everywhere has got big, single-family house stock, because forever we thought everybody was a family that needed four bedrooms, or one- and two-bedroom rental apartments, and there was sort of nothing left in the middle. Like I said, Simsbury similarly has this missing middle. So the idea is that this project bridges that gap, it provides these options for...
Particularly located areas.
Located areas too. I mean, it's perfect for that, because it makes it so attractive for the kinds of people that are looking for those options. You know, I don't need the big house anymore, my kids have moved out, or I'm just starting a family, or I'm a single woman and I need a community where I can find this little house, feel safe, be connected to things, so.
We actually kind of have it in the Ensign Bigford Developments.
Yeah, those are working wells, yeah.
If you look at those, those are still somewhat affordable.
We actually studied that, all that cable Meadow, and we said, what's the next generation of that? And that was part of what we looked at. And what's maybe a little higher construction quality, you know, for today's standards?
But the same, there's some size, there's sizes, similar sizes, yeah.
Elevators in those buildings?
In the multifamily, yes.
So that's...
Because it's three floors.
Three floors?
Yeah.
Because I'm just thinking along the lines of downsizing, that makes sense to have the elevators. I would recommend more garages, I know you've said maybe some, if that's what you're gearing towards, because those people would want to have a garage. And they're probably going to be willing to pay for it or rent it.
Yeah, that was one of the, we had a lot of discussions about that, the trade-offs, if more garages take up more space, how you integrate those. So this was our sort of, our middle ground was if a third of the multifamily units had access to a garage. You know, again, it's one of those things too, with that affordable thing that you're trying to find, someone might compromise on a covered parking spot to save 300 bucks a month on rent or on the purchase price of the condo, so. But I think we'll continue looking into that.
In the last several months, there were some stories about residential development in New York where the demand has suddenly been filled and people are looking for, the owners are looking for residents rather than residents looking for a place. What happens here when the market can't absorb the scale? I mean, we're talking in this town now, adding maybe 2,000 rental units or small apartment-like units up and down Hot Meadow Street. What distinguishes this to make it a sellable proposition in the face of a declining market?
Yeah, I think we've had a lot of good conversations about this, but I think...
We don't want to build something that's going to compete with those, with the others in town, or even in the budding counts. What we're looking for is something unique and with a sense of the mix of the type of housing that we have, and the size, and of course, the location is key here. I mean, location should be something that a lot of the others don't have, which I think is a real plus.
Right. I would, I totally would there.
If it was affordable.
If it was affordable, yeah.
Right. And I really wish we had a few.
But you know, on the marketing side, you know, it will be interesting for us to hear what you have to say, you know, knowing that you've got another thousand units at least being built in town, where is the demand coming from? In Connecticut, it's not exactly growing in population. So, I mean, some of the ones, you know, that are being built are filling up, I don't know where they're coming from. But, you know, we don't want you to compete against the other one either. It doesn't do us any good to have any of them not.
I wouldn't be surprised if the majority of the people that move here are people that already live in Simsbury. That it's a new option for a new phase in life, or, you know, a new economic situation, or, you know, that this is just an alternative that doesn't exist here currently, and allows someone to stay in Simsbury and not leave Simsbury, you know. So I mean, across the board, anywhere we work right now, it's the retiring baby boomers, the empty nesting baby boomers. Every project I'm working on is basically driven by them, as much as, you know, I wish it was a broader audience than that.
Well, and I think, Jeremy, as I tagged to that, I think where the dearth of housing's gonna be is in the resale sector. You know, the baby boomers moving out of the 3,000 square feet and the 4,000 square feet, and I think where the inventory may be higher than, I mean, the realtors will tell you this is going to be in resales. You have 20, 30-year-olds, foot-level house in Simsbury, there's going to be some of those, more of those on the market, because I think this alternative, for its energy efficiency and walkability, would motivate them to put that on the market. That's just our thoughts. There are not, there's not enough new jobs being created to do it all out of new job creation, so it's gonna have to be some lateral moves.
But you see your intention to, when the application comes forward, to submit some sort of professional analysis about the market and why you're so confident you'll sell these, and that. Because, I mean, I find it encouraging that you have such enthusiasm, but, you know, as my colleagues play out, there are a lot of units that have been approved for better or worse, it's done. They're approved and some are under construction and some are not. But it would be helpful to have some compelling analysis on that area, you know, submit. I'm not sure that it's required, but I think it would be helpful.
Let me ask you something else, though. Pent Road starts at the corner of the post office, and my recollection, and I haven't looked at it, albeit it's 30 years, I think there's a marker up there that talks about how that was the roadway that the militia took to Boston. And so somewhere down there, there was a bridge that went across the river.
Ferry.
Or ferry. But in any case, I'm just thinking that as you design, you know, something across that lawn, there might be a place for a marker, or some sort of connection with historic significance of Pent Road and that, you know. But, you know, I'm not sure anyone else would know what I'm talking about in terms of that marker.
Mr. Chairman, I have talked to the development team about that very aspect, that there is a monument associated with the Simsbury militias' march to Boston to join the Revolutionary War. And one of the things that I told them, that this would be a revolutionary new place to live in Simsbury.
I do have a concern about Pent Road, though, because I really like the green spaces and how you've really given a nice definition. Pent Road, I prefer not to have that middle roadway, because I think everybody's gonna try and keep going. I mean, it's gonna create, to me, a lot of traffic trying to cut through to...
To Pent Road?
Yeah, to Hot Meadow. You also have three crossings across the bike path, which just doesn't work for me at all. And it's just a suggestion, but that bike path can't deal with three crossings, in my opinion, in that short a distance. So I much preferred the green space that went east-west for that reason. I mean, you already have acknowledged it in the front and the middle, but those three crossings across the bike path are really a concern for me.
Yeah, and I think that's something we'd like to keep looking at. I think what we're trying to balance, as we know, there'll be, either safety concerns, the fire marshal always wants multiple points of access, we're trying to think about that a little bit.
Bike path is sacred. I mean, it is like, you don't want to mess with that bike path, and there's tons of people on that, you know.
So I think that's also a matter of how those areas get detailed, and how we make sure that they're safe places to cross. And again, I think we will keep looking at all of those concerns, because you're correct.
Yeah, there's a lot of people going in and out.
Another form of traffic intersection, a lot of people going in and out. And I think what'll also happen, I believe, you know, we started talking a little bit about traffic earlier, we still have to do a formal analysis. But the other, the outer connections, we believe would just be right in, right out, because of the nature of the boulevard. So it's really the central intersection that we imagine most folks will be coming and going from.
Yeah, but I'd be concerned they'd be, keep going straight up, you know, which I don't think, you disagree?
Well, I agree, and I was gonna ask you if there will be a traffic study and if there'll be a light there, which I'm not saying is good or bad, but if you're gonna have that many units, that many cars going through there, going straight up or not.
We just don't have any other residential on that bike path, you can't go in and out.
So that could be quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would certainly, in a formal application, do the traffic analysis, which would look at all those things. My inclination is that 130 units probably isn't enough to necessitate a stoplight, but it's not my area of expertise, just based on previous projects I've worked on, especially because we're trying to provide a few options for coming and going, but we would certainly do all of the required analyses, and we know that would be a hot topic when we come back in.
But I don't think you can force the traffic out of the Pent Road, because it's a private road, so it wouldn't require the state survey, but being a private road, because really it's property, I think it's property of the church.
Pent Road is in the public realm.
Yeah, so you've got, there's straight across with it.
This came up at design review, and one of the things we talked about is, this is part of a much larger plan for downtown. So if you look at the existing plan for downtown and the future buildup of downtown, that the post office and Simsbury shops and all that over time has the potential for changing. So you want to try and hold true to some of that grid pattern that in 2016, it may not be 100% optimal to have that intersection with Pent Road. But if the post office is redeveloped at some point in time, or incorporated into properties north and south of it, that the Pent Road issue gets addressed in a more solidified manner in the future as development modifies. It's almost like you're having the discussion of, are we building Iron Horse, where do we put the intersection? To put the intersections where the old ones were. When you built Iron Horse, you didn't incorporate any new ones. So they're trying to hold to, this is really the existing ones, are. If you look at the charrette, the charrette actually puts a four-way intersection through Simsbury shops and through St. Mary's Church. So I wasn't sure on which plan we are beholding to.
Yeah.
And for the discussion in 2016, and if you look at the plan there, you know, the intersections are a little bit different. Again, they go direct, that southern one goes directly through Simsbury shops, and the northern one goes through St. Mary's Church.
I'm just trying to think of...
So again, it's balancing all those units. I think in the future, Pent Road will morph into something other than what it is today, whether it becomes an alleyway or a pedestrian way. The post office has been there since the 60s, will it be here in another 10, 20, 30, 40 years? Or perhaps the post office gets incorporated in another aspect of development downtown? And then that becomes available to be incorporated into a project in close proximity to this project, where they incorporate their transportation needs in...
And that makes sense, but then I still have two other entries I'm dealing with, two.
Crossing.
I think we can look at that.
Yeah.
I think we should look at that.
I think some of the issues, and again, I'm coming in with experience from the outside, not living in the community and dealing with it day-to-day, and looking at the urban core of the center of town more with an urbanistic eye, that this is an urban traffic pattern that will become accustomed over time to not zip in through town at 35 to 45 miles an hour, that you're in an urban core, and that Iron Horse Boulevard is posted 25, although the speed limits may be higher than that, because we don't have that massing yet. And as downtown develops, you may have a slower speed.
I mean, I appreciate the layout, I mean, I do like the layout, I just have a concern with that crossing. Is it gonna be phased?
We haven't gotten to that level of detail. I can't imagine it wouldn't be phased. These things usually, you know, it's hard to imagine it all coming online all at the same time, but again, we haven't...
Phased by type or section, do you think, or...
Probably by section, but a little bit of this is also how it's being developed. Is it one developer, is it five developers? You know, those things can have an impact on, if one guy's doing this type and one guy's doing that type, it might create a different kind of strategy versus if one person's building the whole thing out.
But this is probably a three-to-five-year community build-out, so it's probably a minimum of two to three construction phases.
Could you just clarify, the, sort of where you settled in your presentation tonight is 135 units with an expectation that you'll go back and see about getting it? Well, which one of these was in the, sort of the final edition of the Town Center Code and the process that led up to it? Is it the 156?
Which one was in the, those were all just schemes we did as our preliminary investigations, just showing that we experimented with a few things.
What's that with the top-left?
140. It was unofficial, but when I asked them what they put on my property, they told me it's 140 units, roughly.
Yeah, I'm a little surprised, I'm visualizing there was another slide of your property, because the buildings were yellow in my recollection, but in any case, I had expected the density to be higher, I guess my memory's fading as I get older, but...
That's the only one that was on the actual charrette. I don't, there had been dozens of other plans that we've looked through and been floating, they've been floating around to a certain extent, but that's the only one that's actually part of the charrette, that plan that never left. And well, I want to mention, correct something, you asked about the flood plain, I said it's all out of flood plain. It's not all out of flood, not all out of flood plain. The flood plain is the great lawn that is designed that way, it's gone through FEMA, it's gone through the process, it's flood storage. It's very dry, you can drive a loaded truck through there right now without any problems at all, but it will flood on storms, and it's called, it's basically taking care of flood storage. So that area, and there's about 10 to 12 feet of difference in grade between the existing great lawn, or the, which is existing, the great lawn is actually existing right now, and the... the Great Lawn is actually existing right now, and the grade of the proposed grade of the property. So there's about three acres that is flood plain. And there's a little over 10 acres that's developed.
So that whole green area called Great Lawn, again, is down in lower elevation, so.
And that was just created within the last two years, that whole thing under.
It looks nice. It looks like a good preliminary layout, and there were a lot of thought into it, for sure.
Do you have any other thoughts on the mix of product or architecture while we're here to have your input?
I think design review is going to be, you know, have their say in it as far as the building type, as far as what you see from Iron Horse, because we could kind of see your renderings, but they might want you to have more trees to buffer that, you know.
I think it'd be nice to do that build out first as well, define the street and have everything else.
And especially if it's connecting to the existing utilities that exist, my guess is it would lend itself to one of the initial phases as well.
Did you look at the property off of West Street, the mill where they built the apartments? They have the suites and they have the condos as well. I'll tell you, that's very successful. Friends of ours just downsized and moved in last week to one of the larger condos. And I think the place is selling out now. It seems to be selling very rapidly. And I think that's a nice mix. And I think the flavor, the way they did the buildings with the brownstone and everything over there, I think may fit here too. I don't know if you're considering brownstone vacates, but there is no consideration. There is some kind of mix of brownstone, and I think it just kind of flows with the building.
The intent also is to try to do a little, not consistently the same style. In other words, we've talked about this before, design review. To do, to use different styles and different parts of it. And Debbie's good, and everybody's trying to figure out, okay, what do we start with? And we're trying to incorporate a lot of the character of what we have in Simsbury, so it doesn't look like somebody just dropped it there from another country. We want to make it look like it fits Simsbury.
Right, so we've studied Reta and Terry's playing.
It's a nice country.
So the first place I lived was in Hayes, I grew up here in Hayes. But the first place I lived after we got married was Simsley Meadow. And we lived inside by side duplex. But that's a whole mix down there, Hayes Meadow, I think, you guys just could plow down there. And they had a nice green area in the center where we would actually have, you know, community parties and things like that. So I noticed on West Street, they incorporated that too. They have a community fire pit and, you know, grills and things like that. So that may all be stuff you want to think about to make it more like a community.
Absolutely. And that's part of the reason why we have a number of, even the way we're talking about the variety of the houses, we also want to have a variety of open spaces. So the fact that the formal green is different than the informal green, is different than the cottage court, is different than the Great Lawn. Each of those things could host different scales of gatherings, communal kind of things.
And I think what separates you apart from everything else, I know the committee here's been talking about everything else that's been approved. West Street's attractions, especially for my friends, was the walkability. The kids had moved out, they wanted to stay in Simsbury, but they wanted the walkability. And that's what you have here, and this is what was discussed at the charrette. And I think that was one of the things that drove keeping this whole residential was to bring more people, not more businesses, more people into the center of town. So I think you got a great project here, you just got to figure out what to make up to be in the numbers.
The other thing too is we have, the bus line goes through here. We've got the right on bike path. There's walking paths everywhere and you can, you know, basically get all kinds of services and restaurants and things that are little, short walking distance, something a lot. You want, and again, the type of people, not type of people, but the, where people are in their lives, you know, whether they're newlyweds or whether or not they're retiring and like, you know, want to downsize or something small, whether it be an apartment or a condo or a duplex or whatever it may be, they have the opportunity to do that. Here, please.
I like that.
Do you have any more comments? I would just suggest as much as you can to integrate the architectural suggestions and illustrations that are in the code. So then when we start looking at it, there's sort of a recognition that, you know, similar to where regulations actually suggest. But I think you're on the right track here. And I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, a real proposal down the road when you're ready to do it. I think it's a great use for that trap, and it'll be a great enhancement to the center of town. And part of what we need is, I think, in presentations, that context is missing Jamie was relating to. See what the other buildings are suggested to look like, the illustrations, then this is, you know, it's easier to relate to. You know, from the size of the structures to the fundamental question of commercial development isn't provided in this particular zone. That's because there's a lot of allocation through the rest of the area, commercial or the combination of commercial or residential. Or live in business, I forget what's the expression for SC4. But, you know, I think you're on the right track here. If you would, you know, give serious consideration to the suggestions of my colleagues, I think you're really going to do something good for the town here in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
There is- We're being asked to have a meeting with Glenn Trolle. And it's been suggested that we do either a special meeting next Monday, the 18th, or one at the end of August, which is maybe the 29th?
Yes, be the fifth Monday of August.
Fifth Monday of August. And my question is, which would you choose?
About a pound on the 18th.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Either one's good for me, but.
Sooner or later.
Sooner or later, right?
It won't hurt my feelings.
I could do it.
When's Labor Day?
Labor Day would be the following Monday.
Okay.
I could do that.
So what do we think?
Earlier.
Earlier, that's very late.
Yeah, I'd go earlier.
Okay.
What is earlier?
Why don't we try to set it to 18th?
Earlier than late August.
July, special meeting here.
He may want the, he may want the late July one.
We may, you may decide on July 18th to do August 29th, because the purpose of the meeting, what we've done to date is worked diligently to look at uses. So we've taken, the purpose of the 18th meeting would be to look at all of the residential uses that are contained within the regulations. They just don't show up in one place. So we've culled through the regulations and tried to articulate what's allowed and what's not allowed, and what's repetitious and what may have outlived its resourcefulness. References to things that may not be germane to 2016. And Glenn's intent, we have module one, two, three and four. Module one is residential, two will be business, then we'll go into commercial and then we'll go into other uses. So our intent is on that night to get through at least residential uses. And we have tables for those, so we can show you what was there, what's proposed and what's potentially being proposed to be eliminated or reorientated within the regulations.
Yeah, sounds good.
And what we'll do is, if the commission wants, do you want those sent out before the meeting? Or do you want them sent out so you can?
Definitely.
We'll get them out to you this week. We're vetting them internally, they may come out towards the end of the week.
That's fine.
Do we need to do anything formal to set a special meeting?
The chairman can set that.
Chairman can set that.
We have to have it noticed 24 hours before the meeting, that's all. So if the staff do a draft agenda, we'll get that done by Thursday.
Yes.
Any other comments or topics?
I just have a quick question. Is there any update on the Ensign Bigford, the mansion property?
Break the road.
Yeah.
They are working with financing and developers.
Always the hidden thing is, how are we going to get it paid for on its own? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
We will adjourn. Home favorite?
Yes.